The Meeting of Civic Regional School Committee Thursday, October 12. And as the agenda notes, we're going to jump right into executive session. If I could have a motion to do so, please.
Some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Marie?
Yes.
Jason, Mark, Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, okay. You want to adjourn over to the conference room?
The office conference room.
The office conference room.
Guidance conference room.
Guidance conference room.
Don't forget the warrants, everybody.
Yep, we will get to those. Could I ask everyone just to stand for a moment? And I realize we've got a lot to do, but if we could have a moment of silence. We just recently lost a very beloved teacher, Big Batch, Mike Bachelin. If we could just have a moment of silence in his honor and his memory. Thank you. Did we want to take something else out of order? Did somebody suggest? Are you folks under time constraints?
Yeah, I had asked our teachers.
Could I, does the committee, if the committee would not mind if we could allow the --
Hold tight.
Thank you.
I really have some thoughts today because I wanted to stay on task. But more importantly, I wanted to, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. I'm Kim Morcat, I'm the SLA president. And I wanted to give an idea about how quickly teachers rebound from summer and into school. Because if you haven't been there, it is difficult to imagine how quickly our lives change and how willing we are to drop all of those lovely beach days that we've been enjoying in time with our family that has been, you know, unencumbered by a bag of grating in the corner, but then how quickly we're back into it full swing. So I wanted to talk a little bit about just some of the volunteerism that happens so we can kind of put into scope what your teachers are doing beyond being amazing teachers. So in addition to just finishing up within the last month since last we spoke, we finished up successful parent-teacher conferences. We had our first round of progress reports, and then we've gotten into the full swing of teaching. At the end of September, we had Homecoming, which consisted of tailgating events, sports, like a ton of athletic events, all of which were won by Silver Lake. And then it culminated with a dance at the end of the night. And there were over 30 teachers in attendance at these various things, and some teachers that kind of stuck with it through the whole day and gave up their entire Saturday from like 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. That's amazing. In addition, we had a best buddies walk where we had teachers not associated with the best buddies program giving up their Saturday to walk. The money didn't even go back to Silver Lake. It wasn't like they were just funding their kids, but the program as a whole. And they went and spent about two and a half hours to bring some more funding to a program that we value at Silver Lake. In addition, we went gold for pediatric cancer awareness, and we raised money in a sparkly boot at the kiosk that was created by one of our teachers, Jess Cale. Now, and it places a pink sparkling boot for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we are filling that boot every day with some money. There are countless under-the-radar volunteer opportunities that I could not even begin to acknowledge, but what I can say is we have efforts from like the GSA, which is run by a volunteer teacher, the Gay Straight Alliance, where they had ally link with a giant banner out where our teachers proudly put their names as an ally to all students. We have college essay writing, as the English teachers know also well. And we have one teacher also here, Ashley Ferrara, who has offered four-hour Saturday sessions of her own time for all students, any student that wants college essay writing, because that's not a part of our curriculum. We do that out of love for our kids. We've written NHS recommendations and college recommendations and a thousand other things. We're gearing up for Breast Cancer Awareness Week. I saw the posters in the middle school, too, and at the high school. I know that multiple teams and athletic programs have adopted different things to do if you drive by Lake Street. Right around the field, you'll see the breast cancer awareness soccer balls, just showing support for the community. We have over 70 teachers signed up for an annual fundraiser, and we have 30 teachers who have signed up to voluntarily get pie thrown in their face in front of children. I don't know how you could show your love for this community any clearer than that. And even right now, right now, we are needed for volunteerism right across the street at the high school where Silver Lake Idol is happening. So if you guys don't mind, we'd like to gracefully bow out and go back to counting those ballots and see if it performs. But again, it's, you know, I just, I think it's unfathomable unless you have lived with a teacher, know a teacher, seen what happens behind the door. So I wanted to highlight a little bit of what goes on.
If the committee, thank you, Kim, but before you leave, if the committee doesn't mind, could I share very quickly something my son came home and told me this past week, and I won't name the teacher, but I was amazed, and it's something I'll remember the rest of my life, he will as well. One of your teachers was speaking to their class this past week or the week before and said that in your life, and I'm paraphrasing, so, but the sense of it was, "In your life, you will build a tower, and in that tower, you will have the people you can count on." It might be your parents, it might be your guardians, it might be an aunt, it might be your friends. You will find, you'll take people out and you'll change that because you'll find some people you thought you could rely on, you could trust, you can't, and they'll leave your tower and they won't return. And that teacher actually said, "I am a member of your tower now, and when you leave Silver Lake for the last time, forever, I will be a member of your tower, and I want you to always remember that." It brought tears to my eyes because not every child has a lot of people in that tower. Some of them don't even have a tower. And that teacher was loving enough, caring enough, and realized what life can throw at people to offer to be in those children's tower. So I just wanted to let you know, I immediately thought of some of the discussions we've had and some of the things we've heard from you. That teacher is amazing, and in my eyes, that teacher is a gift, as all teachers are, but really a premium gift to this school community to say that to those children.
Yeah, there are kids.
Yep.
And we are so thankful that the community shares them with us because we carry them in our hearts everywhere we go. We don't ever leave them behind. It doesn't matter when they leave, they are always ours. So yeah, that's common across the board, and I'm glad that that teacher was able to do that.
And I hope every one of those students remember that that teacher meant that honestly and from the heart, and if they ever needed to go back to that teacher, that teacher would be there for them.
Always.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, really? So that's where she got the concept from? Yeah, oh my God, I was in tears when -- That was great of me. Thank you. Fred, you're next on the agenda, I believe.
Okay. So actually, I wasn't doing a vote, the meeting law presentation. I was concentrating, and I apologize if there was a misunderstanding on that. I was concentrating on the issue of what constitutes a deliberation among school committee members, and I wanted to briefly go through what constitutes a deliberation and when it's in violation of the open meeting law. Because there's lots of emails going back and forth, and not saying the emails violate the open meeting law, but these are considerations that need to be made when these emails are going out. So the open meeting law defines a deliberation as an oral or written communication through any medium. In order to be an illegal distribution, it has to occur among a quorum, but the quorum could be serial as opposed to in a single email. So at any point in time where the communication reaches a quorum, then that would be in violation of the open meeting law. The distribution of a meeting agenda, scheduling or procedural information, or reports or documents that may be discussed at a meeting is not a violation of the open meeting law. So if you're a subcommittee and you have a bunch of reports, you can send that to all the school committee members before meeting. Superintendent will do that to school committee members. But if the school committee members then begin discussing those particular reports or documents, and a quorum does that, then that's a violation of the open meeting law.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Can you, like, me as the chair of the elementary school committee, if I email an agenda item to my members, and I just explain something, but don't give an opinion, just give maybe some backstory about what we're going to be discussing, is that deliberation?
No, that wouldn't be a deliberation.
As long as I say, please don't respond, we'll discuss this at the next --
The primary issue is if an opinion is given in the particular document, even if no one responds. So let me give you an example of that. Let's say the email goes out and it's something to be on the agenda, and the member of the school committee says, "My opinion on this issue is this," then even if the person says to everyone not to respond, it's still a violation of the open meeting law. So I had a case actually where one member of the five-member school committee objected strenuously to a particular issue, actually sent an email to the other four members stating that, "I strenuously object to this issue, and this is why." Then the school committee member did something further and released the statement to the newspapers, to the local radio. Then there was a complaint filed with the attorney general's office, and the attorney general's office found that the school committee member violated the open meeting law, even though the person said, "Do not respond to this email because they don't want to violate the open meeting law." But the school committee member had the right to put it in the press and give it to the radio, but did not have the right to send the communication to the other school committee members, even though those members could read it in the newspaper or hear it over the radio. So some of these regulations are a little arcane, and the problem is that public bodies frequently violate the open meeting law in their communications because they don't understand the arcane requirements of the open meeting law. And the other part of that that applies equally is to subcommittees. So everything that I just said applies equally to subcommittees. So the problem is, you know, if you're able to express your opinion in a subcommittee with a small number of members, it might help to facilitate business, but it is going to be a violation of the open meeting law.
So how's a quorum committee to play in a subcommittee?
It's the same quorum required. If you have three members of the subcommittee, two members constitute a quorum. So the object of the open meeting law is, say, if you have a discussion, do it in your meetings. Don't do it in communications amongst each other unless it's really routine matters. I can send out legal opinions because I'm not covered by the open meeting law, but you can't respond in any way to my legal opinions.
Not even for clarification or anything like that?
Well, you could ask for a clarification because that's not expressing an opinion. So the, so questions are asked about process, procedure, what the legal opinion is, all of that's fine. But once someone says, you know, "I think we should do this and the other thing based upon what was just sent out," that's where you can violate the open meeting law. So most violations are unintentional. But I don't know what would help. You have a big school committee, you have lots of subcommittees. It's possible to just put this in a bullet form, you know, do's and don'ts, and it's a document that people on the school committee and the subcommittees keep so that there's no unintentional violation of the law. All emails have to be archived, too. So I think you do that, but if you don't, you have to. Any email or communication that is sent out on school committee business has to be archived in a separate, in a single location. Besides the open meeting law, there was an advisory from the attorney general's office on that issue 50 to 20 years ago.
Fred, let me ask you another question. I think, I'm sorry, if I may ask.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
I have also, over the years, used my separate email account, but my understanding is, and now I have a Silver Lake email account, I'm getting better at using it, but my understanding is if there is any complaint or anything, and I have used that other email account for business pertaining to this, then they can ask for all of my private email account as discovery. So it's really would be better for us to not use our own emails, obviously.
Right, and, you know, you see it in the, what's come in the news involving Hillary Clinton and some of the Trump associates.
I have my own private email server, by the way.
Yeah. The law in this area of Massachusetts, and by the way, the federal law also, has been consistent over the last 20 years or so, that all this material has to be archived. If you don't archive it, one, you're in Massachusetts, you're actually violating, violating the open meeting law. But secondarily, as you correctly indicated, it exposes you to having your email actually subpoenaed or at a minimum, subject to a request for a production of documents. And I have had that occur in cases, including the case I just mentioned, because there was also a request for all email communications, and he had private email communications.
Right.
Now, typically, as counsel, I get to redact that, but the attorney general's office can ask for it unredacted. So typically, they've been pretty good about that unless it's a willful violation. So those are some of the primary issues. The superintendent is not governed by the open meeting law. I'm not governed by the open meeting law. It has to be a public body or a subcommittee of a public body. Doesn't matter how many members. You can't have a subcommittee without two members. So by definition, a subcommittee is two or more members. So if you're a single person, you're not subject by, to the open meeting law, and you don't have to hold your discussion with yourself in an open session.
Some people listen to that word.
I actually had that come up in one location where there were sessions because the single person wasn't having their thoughts communicating in open session. But one person isn't subject to the open meeting law.
Takes all compliance.
But of course, for, if you have a subcommittee of two, you can't meet unless the two people are there. The meetings have to be placed, and you have to run it like a regular meeting with minutes and everything else. So I guess having given that brief review, if it would be helpful, I could do kind of a bullet point for the school committee.
Anything, yeah.
Yeah. That highlights those particular points.
Can you keep it in English as much as possible?
Well, yeah, I would, and I try to, you know, just bullet point that particular information. I think the other reason I'm here tonight is the solar can of information and discussion.
Is it okay if we took that out of order?
Oh, I saw it as maybe the next thing, but I was looking at the distribution against certain agenda.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We also had communication, your protocol, which I know we talked about before, Fred.
So let's talk about that for a minute. I want to be really, really clear about this point. My contract does not say that the only person that can communicate directly with me on a routine basis is the chair and the superintendent of the school. That's a protocol. It's not a contract requirement that I have with the school district. I don't have that contract requirement with any entity that I represent. The problem with not having a streamlined communication, either with the chair of subcommittees, the chair of the school committee, or the superintendent, is you really do run into the circumstance where it begins to look like deliberation and violation of the open meeting law. And let's say the person says, "I'm not going to run the risk of violating the open meeting law by only sending it to Fred and no one else." Well, that kind of puts me in an uncomfortable position because I'm having offline communications with a school committee member that no one knows about. And if I send that opinion to everyone else on the school committee, then that's going to be a deliberation and violation of the open meeting law because that may contain the person's opinion, and now the person's opinion has been sent to every member of the school committee. So I, and the other problem with individual conversations besides not having the rest of the school committee know about it is that they can be miscommunicated, that the individual would say, "Well, I've had all these private conversations with Fred, and he said they did say," and I don't know that the person's saying that Fred said they did say, and I may disagree that I said they did say. So the typical communication is with the chair, and then if you have a question, you just ask the chair, or with the superintendent. And I have no allegiance to a particular person. Whoever is the chair is who I speak to, and when that person is no longer chair, then I don't have routine conversations with that person. Sometimes a prior chair will get upset about that because they'll say, "Fred, you used to talk to me all the time." I said, "Yeah, you were chair." I don't have those same conversations with you because you're not chair. And if you become chair again, then I'll have those communications with you. So I found that to be a protocol that works. It is basically the protocol that I've had here in many years I've done here, and unless there's an issue with that protocol, then I'd like to continue with it. But I will do whatever the direction of the school committee. If you want to treat for all with me, and that's your decision, then that's what we do.
So the protocol is superintendent, the chair, and the chairman of the subcommittees.
Right.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions about that? Does anyone want to suggest any changes?
No, I think that streamlining that communication is, I think, would be important with, I think that's just the way we should continue.
Okay. All right.
So I don't think that, I don't know if you want a motion vote, but I don't think it's really necessary. It's understanding that that, that's the protocol.
Yeah, yeah. Or do we need a motion?
No.
No, I know we don't, but if that's how the committee feels, then.
Well, the other thing that I can do when I get those communications, I can email, now that we have this understanding, I can email back and say, you know, "We really need to handle this a different way." So I can take the responsibility to do that.
I would like somebody to motion for us to agree and continue to follow that protocol. Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Okay, so that's the protocol. Now I can say that it's the protocol. I don't mind if you go through a usual agenda and to get up to, you know, the solar issue.
Are you okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, and then after the solar issue, if there's nothing else for me, I mean, but --
Okay, thank you. Public participation. The public has been extremely, extremely patient with us tonight. Seeing none? Okay. Approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Nope.
Are we holding the executive for the five?
Well, that was the, you meant regular session, right? Okay.
Yes.
Motion on executive?
Make the motion to accept the minutes of our executive session and deliver them.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative review. We did have a meeting. Do you want me to report on it? Do you want to report on it? Anyone? Okay. We did have, would you like to?
No.
Oh.
That's about you.
We did have a meeting. We elected a new chair. Mike Anton, Mike Anton from Simpson. And we began discussing the process we go through to prepare Joy's evaluation again this year. There are two contracts up for renewal, the shared Joy's and Marie Gravell's contract, so that will be the work of the body of that committee over the next few months. And that's probably it. We're meeting again in December, before the December school committee meeting.
December 14.
Yes. Okay. CTE?
Mr. Hopper is our chairperson. CTE is not here tonight. We have a dinner provided by the students over at the Lighthouse Cafe next week at 6:00. They bring in all of the people from the community that support the various programs for career and technical education students. It's the advisory board. We get to hear from the advisory board in the spring, and they tell us all the things that they've done to help out our kids. We get to have a nice dinner, and then we will break out into a CTE subcommittee meeting, and those advisory groups will go and have their meetings to set their goals for the year.
Wonderful. That's always a nice event.
It's amazing.
It is.
Sorry. I will be there.
Okay. Chairman's report. I have nothing new to report. Legislative agents report.
So I've sent you all a copy of the updated open meeting laws that went into effect just last week. All the changes are highlighted in red. I'd be more than happy to run through some of them with you, but since counsel was here, I figured I would be the layman tonight and just hold my tongue. I kind of figured out why the people up in Beacon Hill were spending money. I mentioned that during my last legislative agent report. The revenues for the first quarter came in above expectations by 2%. This is the first time, I think, in nine quarters we've actually come in above expectations, and it seems like the kids are in the candy store, so they're taking advantage of the positive news, and they're running. Hopefully, this trend will continue, but as we all know in education, one instance of anything is not a trend, so you need to be careful. There was an article in USA Today talking about how charter schools are actually profiting from taking students from our schools, and then some of those students end up never really attending full day or at all, but because of when we have our enrollment deadlines, those schools get the money anyways. It was a very interesting article. It seemed to be nationwide. At our last meeting, I also talked to you guys about the legislative work I was doing with MASC and the resolution committee work I was doing with MASC. I do request right now that the committee give me some guidance on how I should vote for the resolutions. In the past, you've given me the leeway to vote my conscience, as long as I found it to be reasonable and sound, putting kids first and local control second. But sometimes amendments are brought at the floor, and if you direct me specifically on resolutions, then I can't vote at all. So, Madam Chair.
So how's the committee feel? What is our pleasure there?
I certainly trust Jason to represent us. I think he has a pretty good understanding of how we think as a group, give you the flexibility on the floor to make those decisions.
I agree.
Okay.
I certainly think he has our trust.
Yeah, and certainly has arms around the issues broadly, tremendously, actually. Could I have a motion to give him direction?
I'll make that motion to allow him to express our wishes, desires at his discretion on the floor.
Excellent. Seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Very good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
There is an MASC Division 3 meeting at the Boston Tavern next week at 6:00. If you sign up, it's free, and we will be discussing the resolutions and parliamentary procedure, and I will be one of the speakers presenting on the legislative table.
We talked about it.
I think it's an experience.
It's good food.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Negotiations.
I think we covered that.
We covered that executive meeting. We're in the process of scheduling it. We're in the process of scheduling another meeting with the support staff soon.
Okay. Cap?
We just had our annual audit, and it came back with a clean bill of health. Nice to hear. We also had a board of trustees meeting where we deposited further monies into some of our obligations, and that account has also helped me doing well.
Very good. Policy.
No meeting scheduled yet, but we do need to add that on our agenda.
Revolving account? We have not had a meeting either.
Needs to be scheduled also.
Yeah, we should probably schedule that as well. Safer?
Hey, there we go. Facilities, we have not had a meeting. There have been a couple of correspondences and regarding school discussion item we had last meeting regarding our admin building and getting a preparation together to find out what either replacement or significant renovations will cost. And I saw that today. It was very nicely presented by our facilities director. I think we should be looking at moving forward with that proposal and getting some ideas on designs and concepts and to move forward with that. So that we can determine what kind of money we as a community are going to have to budget and put aside to be able to take care of this long needed issue of making our admin spaces appropriate for people, fine people that we have working for us, and particularly in their accessibility. So, the other item that's on the top of the list on facilities is we have moved forward with our solar canopy discussion on the parking lots. We have a vendor that's looking at putting a proposal together. It's a significant investment on their part, but it will provide a significant amount of income. We do not have specifics on that, awaiting to hear from that from their proposal. However, we do have an issue, once we went through the legal process, that needs to be addressed to Maclure, and I'm going to pass to Fred to give us an update on that so I don't misspeak. Thank you.
Yeah, we've asked, we have our own legal opinion, but we also have asked Desi to give us the legal opinion, the written legal opinion on this issue. But my son Russell had done some researches on this issue and actually confirmed what I believe to be the case, that there is no statutory provision that allows you to lease land for a noneducational purpose, that is, in order to raise funds. However, you could obtain legislation that would permit you to do that. So, one route here, and we followed most recently with regard to the easement issue, is to get special legislation. I believe that Russell crafted some potential language. You know, if Desi comes back and says, that's not necessary, you don't need special legislation, then we don't have to go that route. Now, if it does require special legislation, and by the way, I would be astonished if Desi says it doesn't require special legislation, then the protocol, we already know what the minimum protocols are because now we followed it a couple of times. It's exactly the same protocol. You can have a more extensive protocol if you choose to. But the minimum protocol is that you draft the legislation, you put it on the agenda, you send copies to the boards of selectmen, and you have a public hearing. And after the public hearing, you vote it. So, that's the minimum protocol that you can follow. Now, there's more extensive protocols you can also follow if you chose to, but you're not required to. And do you want me to give examples of that or not?
I particularly think the minimum that we have exercised in the past for an issue would probably be sufficient, but I think that the proper notification with the proper, meaning those requirements within our community, generating revenue for the sake of a educational use, not necessarily generating revenue for the sake of something else, certainly fits within the preview of the minimum requirement.
Right. And, you know, if it was space within the building, that issue was already addressed, and also the protocols about where that money goes is also in the statute as well. By the way, if the solar panels were on top of the roof and used partially for the electricity of the building, then that is permitted. And several of our clients have actually done that in different occasions. But I have one other client that wants to do exactly what you want to do here, and they will generate as, at least as much money, if not more, than what you're looking at here. And they're very curious on where you went up because they're literally one step behind you waiting for this process to happen.
And there are other schools that have power purchase agreements that have already taken care of their electricity requirements, but being able to use school property to generate revenue that can support the school with the guidelines being for the indoor space, that it needs to be provided as a revenue source and all excess goes into our...
Exactly.
E and D, I think is the best way to do that, to take it and just define that we can do it outside and provide this lease.
The other thing is, I wouldn't wait too long for the state to get back. I've had cases where, well, I won't go into exactly what criticism is, but, you know, I wouldn't wait forever for the state to give a response. And so, you know, if they do and they say that special legislation isn't necessary, then that'd be fantastic. But if this is something you're interested in, you have a timeline to do it, I would go the special legislation route.
There are a couple of reasons. We have a building window of likely constructing these during the time the kids are out of school, so we need to be ready. The other issue is the EverSource impact study is going to take some time to have the electric folks decide if the cables are the right size and everything else to support. So, we have a window...
So, you might be up and running by spring.
Correct. So, we need to move on the process. The other issue that I think you wanted to address is that these leases are normally structured around a five-year timeframe, and we're asking for something in a 20-year range because these facilities are basically maintenance-free and...
And I think you were, I remember reading what Russell put together. I thought it was for 30 years with the option to go another 30 years or something like that.
But, I mean, current legislation doesn't allow leases to go beyond five years, so...
And that's why it has to be placed in the legislation.
Right. So, we need to do this. Now, once again, Silver Lake is starting the precedent that others will follow on some of these, some of these cases.
Like I said, I have a large school system that's literally calling us weekly to see where you are.
Can I ask a question? This doesn't require special legislation because we want a 20- or 30-year lease rather than a five. We can't lease land for a noneducational reason?
It's both.
It's both? Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said something about that's why we were going to...
We can lease inside. There is already precedent on that.
Right, yeah.
But it follows a set of guidelines.
Right.
Stop me if I'm wrong, but outside requires, there's no case that they can cite.
Yeah.
And we also need it for the length of time.
And the taxes.
Okay, so it's two-pronged. It's not if we said, okay, five years, we're out of the special legislation territory, we still have...
We still have both.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, I spoke to Representative Falter about it, and he was going to pass the information on to Senator DiMascio, that just that we're moving in this direction, so he's willing to take this and thinks it's a great idea for a statewide situation. And we had some brief discussion about whether or not it would be something to put forward instead of a case-by-case, but to make this a statewide agenda so that school systems could move forward with it as a law without having to go case-by-case special legislation.
You know, that would be great, but again, who knows how long that process will take? So, getting your own special legislation is going to be the quickest process, and then if the state wants to follow you later, they can do that.
He did mention that, but he also, he did say, though, that it sounded like an outstanding revenue source for schools across the state to use to offset their school money.
Yeah.
Well, it's a great idea, and...
Yeah, that way the state could reduce the funds they give the schools because they're important.
You can see that coming, right? Net neutral effect? God, I hope not. So, I'm sorry, Mark, were you...
I think our next state, and I think Russell, I sent a couple of comments back to see if he could be a little more general on not pinning down the location onsite in case we get a design change in the middle that says, oh, yeah, that area over here we now can use instead of not.
And continue working with Russell on that. As far as the process, I'm willing to do that because we've already done it twice.
Appreciate that.
We're going to do the same process.
Now, Russell, I had a dialogue with Russell. He had a little bit of concern that it, without that specificity of where, that it could be a snag for us. Did he share that with you?
No.
No? Okay. You can take that offline with him if you want. Maybe I had a dialogue with him, you know, before you had your most recent.
On the timetable, I think we're looking at a November meeting to present the legislation, get it in place, and then we, I don't know how we have to go with the public hearing process.
We'll do the same thing we did in the others, and I will work with the committee and Joy to do it identically to what we did in the past, because that's all we need to do.
And we said, oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Laura.
I just have a question about timeline in terms of, you know, I've been part of the subcommittee, so I've been in some of these conversations and heard a little bit about the solar canopy, you know, ideas. And I, I'm not sure that I, we haven't seen a design yet. Is that right?
No, I haven't.
And we've seen some ideas, but like there has, I'm just trying to clarify whether or not there's been sort of, so there hasn't really been a definite design or idea for what it's going to look like.
No, and nor proposal, how much revenue this will generate for the school.
And so, where would that be in the timeline? You know, in terms of sort of the legal timeline, and then there's sort of the actual decision-making timeline in terms of what this is going to look like?
Well, the legislation to go forward, stop me if I'm wrong, does not mean we have to vote to do this. So, we could have permission to do it, and then at some point say we don't want to do this.
So, we don't have to have the design to get, to move forward? We can kind of move forward on the legislation at the same time figuring out what makes the most sense in terms of design.
Yeah, so the legislation will simply indicate that you have the ability to do that. It isn't that you have to do that. And when the school committee votes on the legislation, it means that it's been approved, but it doesn't mean that it has to be done the next week, the next month.
So, when might we be able to see sort of some ideas about what it could look like?
Well, again, the impact study, it's a 2-megawatt system that they have proposed. It runs in an investment for them in a $6 million range. But it always going to depend on what the local grid will support and whether or not there's some other aspects of size that are based on state regulation, and those change year by year. So, because we're getting into 2018, the state has not pinned down in all cases what size system requires what size application process or anything else. There was no way we're going to make 2017's ruling at this point. So, as we go down the road into 18, we're going to get more clear on that. The other, there was some idea that we could go above the 2 megawatts than those other areas that I wanted Russell to make sure that we could conclude would be available. The current proposal does not include anything on the Lake Street's parking lot, for example. I asked them if they could consider putting panels over our seating at Serico Field. There is a seal that goes between the panels that'll actually create a waterproof roof. You could have covered seating for your football stadium, for example. However, the cost of the steel to build such a structure makes it very cost prohibitive on their part, as the current rule is, you know, in the laws. So, some of these ideas. Brian Nigera had suggested using the area between the two ball fields, but they feel that the impact of a baseball is significant enough to damage the equipment, so they pull those off the design. But as the design evolves, it would be nice to be able to at least pin down and say we could use our parking areas in the legislation, so as general as we could to get in.
Two over here, two. We also have that other land over there, two that's sitting between...
Right. And I don't know, again, if you wanted to include additional sites, but I don't know how specific we have to be in a...
I don't think the legislation has to be that specific, but I think the public is going to want to know whether it is a tackle.
Right. So, I mean, we...
There will be a public here.
We said over the parking areas and potentially over the stadium seating area of the football stadium and stopped. I think that would give us enough levity to evolve the design to meet the requirements to maximize the profit for the school.
I just wanted to get a sense of the timeline. It wasn't clear to me whether there was sort of a design that we're moving forward with or whether we were still sort of waiting on that and what the timeline would be. You know, I'm just interested in knowing sort of what it's going to look like and, you know, how it's going to impact things visually. I think that's the basis that I have, so I'm just interested to know what it may look like, and I hadn't really seen that yet, so it just, I didn't know if I missed something or, you know, that just still being determined.
I don't believe we're going to have a design by November, but we should be able to have a legislation by November. I think if we put it all off to December or January for both items, if you feel that you would rather have the design in front at the same time we do the public hearing, that might be a better sales pitch to the three towns to have everybody have a concept of what they are.
But again, with the, and I don't have strong feelings either way, but I'm thinking, I think you had indicated a little while ago, we can have the special legislation and still not vote the plan that comes before us and not move forward, but the legislation's in place if we choose to. We're not obligated to move forward.
Right. So, we could go forward with the legislation with the public hearing, and we could have an additional public hearing on the design if we wanted later.
Probably prudent, yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe that's a better way to go, and then we'll be telling the general public that we will before we go forward with a actual bill of design, that then we'll have a public hearing on the design for their input at that point.
Right.
That might be the better way.
Yes, I would agree with that.
So, I am available for the November and the December meeting, so you just need to let me know if you would like me there for either or both, and you decide that later.
Okay.
Are you making a decision tonight as to whether you're going to do the legislative?
I would like to say that we should move to go forward with the minimum requirements, and that we would do that public hearing in November.
Is that a motion?
If, yeah, that is a motion.
Right. And can I just, in that, that, okay, so it's open for discussion?
So, my question is, and we have Fin, Fin, Finance Committee from Kingston here tonight, representation, but has there been any discussion with the boards of selectmen from the three towns or FinCom, or would there be any sort of negative opinion on this that you can think of? I mean, I would think this is all good.
To generate revenue?
I know.
Negative opinions here.
Or, you know, any concerns or anything, I think, that...
No, I, our conversation's sort of offline with some other folks is, can we expand this concept to other parking lots? You know, our local school parking lot campuses are pretty big, you know. I know that Silver Lake is doing the research here, but should this become a viable opportunity? And you work out sort of logistics, you know, and I'm sitting here talking to Carl saying, how do you handle things like repairs and maintenance and vandalism in a parking lot with kids driving in a parking lot? I'm curious to know how you're going to handle that. So, if those logistics work out, we'd like to see if we can leverage this in other areas of the community.
This needs to be handled by student drivers.
Generating revenue is a no-brainer.
Now, in the motion included, and then there would be the written notification to the boards of selectmen.
Correct. And also that the plan would be to have a public hearing on the design subsequent to the...
Subsequent, yeah.
Let's put that out in the...
Okay, who's drafting that letter to the boards of selectmen?
Joy and myself.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Sorry, Joy. I'd love to.
You got to have a vote on that?
Yeah, any more discussion, no? Okay.
I noticed that.
All those in favor of the motion as discussed?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, thanks for all the work.
Yeah, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work.
It is. And you're paving the way for everybody else.
Yeah, I'm going to have a few jump run fagging, and it might be a nationwide movement.
I don't see why it wouldn't be this one. It's a parachute outside.
Yeah, no, it's a wonderful idea.
And if you don't know, like, there's a ice rink down in Falmouth when they built the brand-new rink.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had, I know one of the ladies who worked on the design of that, but, you know, they covered all their parking lots, which is nice for occupant.
We get the lights fixed on the deal, too.
But it provides the electricity for the rink.
Does it, yeah.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, they spent a lot of money up front, but it does cover that.
Yeah. Bristol Community College has some over their parking lots as well.
If you're ever on the, on the Cape, Upper Cape Tech, go over Sandwich, just pull in the parking lot, it's pretty impressive.
Really?
Yeah.
Excellent. Fred, thank you as always.
My pleasure.
We'll see you next month. School start times, I'm going to guess that we need to, yeah, no discussion there. Treasures report, an annual discussion is, shouldn't be.
That's my era.
That, you know, you did exactly what I told, you did exactly what I said, because I have my quotes around. You took the word audit out. You did exactly what I asked, so it was my, my error, not yours.
No ha, no foul. So there are warrants around the table, and we just need to make sure that we're all signing them tonight because we have a few members who aren't here, and we need to make sure we have the proper number of votes on there. Regular agendas, regular warrants going around, there's 15 of them totaling $1,281,143.31. There was two payroll warrants circulating for $1,507,146.33 per grand total tonight of $2,788,289.84. Thank you very much, Val.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In Union 31, we have not had a meeting. Okay. Alrighty. Jill, is this your first report with us?
Is it? It may be. I've been here before.
You were here last month, I'm not.
But this is my first official report, I think.
Well, welcome.
I'm pretty sure.
And I'm sorry we made you wait six and a half hours to deliver this.
I'd like to start with my curriculum instruction and assessment update, and then give you a little more detail on ESPT, the screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment presentation, in case you have questions on that. But first I'll go over some highlights from the curriculum instruction and assessment update. The, on September 15th, our schools met with faculty to investigate ways to incorporate social emotional learning in the schools and classrooms. And to do that, they're using the Castle five core competencies, and that's why this is included in your packet. I don't know to what extent this is, I know that last year the district worked on a plan for success that really emphasizes these social emotional learning core competencies, but I wanted you to have some information in terms of the language and terminology that we're using, and specifically what are these practices that promote social and emotional learning? So that's included there for your use. The educator evaluation timeline has been updated and shared with principals and coordinators, and this is the time of year in the evaluation system where we self-assess and we set our goals. The professional development committee has met and decided to establish a monthly meeting schedule, and our goals will be not only to plan for this year's ongoing professional development, but also to establish a professional development schedule for next year in advance to help set those goals as well and to, to help us plan effectively to make sure that we're meeting our, our school, district, and personal goals as educators. On October 10th, the professional development committee decided to focus on growth mindset, and we had a speaker on October 10th for Research for Better Teaching. Her name was Danelle West. She is the Director of Professional Development for Research for Better Teaching. Her keynote was on high expectation teaching, and I have for you there the objectives of the day. The, in, in the most simplest terms I could use in terms of describing growth mindset versus fixed mindset. With growth mindset, we believe that smart is something we can get with effective effort. Whereas a fixed mindset is the belief that smart is something innate or something that we're born with. And there has been a great deal of research, brain research especially in the 90s, that has really helped us to understand child development, brain development, and really helping to foster new practices in the classroom that really help promote students' beliefs in themselves and ways to really help boost achievement and helping students to persevere and to build tenacity, which are important skills in any discipline and at any grade level. So that was the focus of the October 10th Professional Development Day, and I have to thank many, many educators for their willingness to lead the breakout sessions. It was a very quick turnaround, and they were very brave in terms of leading and helping their colleagues with this material, and they did a wonderful job, and we're very grateful. And also thank you to the high school for hosting the event. The Title III grant has been submitted. We are a low incidence district for English language learners, so we joined a consortium of schools to see if we could obtain some grant money to help support English language learners in our district. It's not a large grant. Our total is $2,735 if approved, but that would help us to provide professional development opportunity here on campus for our teachers and also some extended day tutoring for our students. Something that you should be aware of, under the new Every Student Succeeds Act, we are required, private schools within our boundaries are eligible to use a portion of our Title III funds. In fact, they are eligible for half of this amount, and so we, we will still use this money, and it is still, if approved, we will find ways to help our students. But I also think it's important sometimes for the public to know why we may have members from private schools at some of our professional development sessions. I think it's important to be aware that there are sometimes those kinds of requirements that go along with grant funding.
Just a funny footnote, it's not funny actually, had this Middle Borough Casino effort gone forward, I was on the elementary school committee at the time, and we did some research, we brought in a consultant, did some research. On average, it would have brought in, I believe it was seven different languages from the workers that would have come into the area, and we would have been challenged by this had that casino. One industry building kind of change in the area can impact a school extremely challenging.
And the only money that was offered was to Carver. It wasn't to Halifax.
Yes.
Because we dealt with that, too, because Kingston, we were going to get zero, and we would still have those seven languages under that.
Yep, yep. So something like this can change overnight because of something peripherally changing in the nearby communities. I just had to share that, because it always stood out in my mind.
So our district leaders will also be participating in a three-day course through Research for Better Teaching, also entitled High, Highly Effective Teaching Strategies. The three dates are there. Our focus is going to be on using effective instructional strategies to motivate all students, but particularly to get low-performing, low-confidence students to change their stereotypes about themselves. And today, actually, I met with our administrative team, and we began talking about the district curriculum accommodation plan, and I provided the regulation here for you in case you're unfamiliar with a district accommodation plan. But what a district accommodation plan does is it allows us to create a support team in schools that really look at any issues that a student may be struggling with, and for us to create a plan to implement interventions in the classroom setting, to help students in a very personalized way, to monitor their growth, to include students and parents in the creation of this plan, and then to, to figure out what kinds of supports a student may, may need. It's important to note that this is a general education plan, not a special education plan. And this is a way to help personalize education for all children, not just students who meet the requirements of, let's say, special education or a 504 type of plan. So we're working on, on that and sharing best practices and developing some common forms and protocols to help integrate also some of the social emotional learning practices that we've been developing. The state assessment results, we believe, will be available potentially next week, although in the conference call I participated in today, they were still calling it tentative. So the hope is, is that we'll get some of the, these additional pieces of information from the state next week, and then be prepared to present to you more detailed information in November. And also, our first quarterly district newsletter was, was released this week. It may have been yesterday or the day before. I don't recall, but thank you to everyone, thank you to all of the contributors, and we hope you enjoy it. And now I'm going to provide you with information on ESPT.
Did all of you get the newsletter?
Yes.
Good.
First is a new, relatively new acronym that we're going to discuss tonight. It stands for screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment.
What's brief inter?
I'm sorry?
What's brief intervention?
So the brief intervention, the screening itself is a, is a very brief screening tool. And so what happens is, is it's a screening tool between a nurse, someone who has been trained in using the tool, and they, it's a series of questions in terms of whether or not students are or have used substances in the past. And then the intervention, we're going to talk about is whether or not that student is referred for counseling and things of that nature. So ultimately, it could lead to referral for treatment. It, the, it actually focuses on early detection, prevention, risk assessment, brief counseling, and then referring them for intervention that can be used in the school setting. The hope is, is that by addressing it early in adolescence, we prevent the use of drugs and alcohol. And that's the real potential strength of the tool. It is not meant as a disciplinary measure. It is, it is really uses a more of an intervention and a referral and a way to help prevent use. And so our nurses, our administrators have been trained in this, and they know the intent and the use of this tool. So in March of 2016, the legislature, the legislature passed a bill, and I have given you a link there if you'd like to read more about it. The school, the, the plan itself, the school nurses, Carol Beck and Penny Spencer, as well as the adjustment council, Dawn McRusson, are going to be the people utilizing the verbal screening tool, which is approved by the Mass Department of Health and Department of Education to screen students for substance-induced disorders. It is conducted annually into different grade levels, and it is expected to be implemented during the 2017, 2018 schedule. Grades seven and nine were selected based upon the Mass Department of Health and Descent guidelines, but also after considering the risk behavior survey results, and also considering the transition between middle and high school in an effort to prevent drug use and substance abuse. So all of those things play a role in helping the team to determine what grades would be. Screening has also helped us to cast a wider net to kind of take a look at behaviors between seventh and ninth grade.
Can I ask a question? The youth risk behavior survey results, is that Silver Lake survey or the state survey? Do we do youth risk behavior survey here? So that was based on Silver Lake's survey results, not the state recommendations?
I think probably a little bit of a combination, but I don't think Silver Lake is that different than the state.
So the tool is called the Craft 2, and it was selected because of its brevity, ease of use, and its predictive strength. And again, the goal of the tool is to prevent harm at the earliest possible stages among students, and that the, the reality is that students are basically only going to share something with you if they're, if they want to share something with you. The training took place for high school, middle school nurses, counselors, and school psychologists. They have all been trained as of this, this past week, and we had some administrators trained actually last year. The Mass Department of Health and the Department of Education sponsored the training. So high school students, grade nine, will be screened the week of March 12th through 16th, and this will be taking place during physical education classes. The middle school students, grade seven, will be screened in January during wellness classes. And the screening will take place in the middle school conference room and the high school library conference room in order to ensure privacy of students. But all students who participate will be individually screened. It's not, it's not a group screening. So how will this be communicated to the community? Nurses and principals will be notifying parents about the screening by letter and an all-call prior to the start of implementation. In the future, the letter of notification must be sent out prior to the start of the school year. Parents, students are able to opt out of the screening in writing in this form that's going to be made available to them with the letter that goes out. So there is an opt-out for the screening. The middle school nurse will also be available for questions during parent conferences, and there will also be a health and wellness table at the high school parent conferences in March. So that's another opportunity for parents, if they have questions about this process, to speak directly with the school nurse and have their questions answered. Other requirements of ESPT in this legislation is that nurses will report de-identified data to the Mass Department of Health within 90 days of the screening. So the students will not be identified by name, but the overall results will be reported to the state. In addition, another part of this legislation is that middle school and high schools will provide educational materials on the dangers of open use and misuse to all students participating in extracurricular athletic activities prior to the start of each athletic season. And I know our athletic director is already well aware of this and informed about the requirements under this regulation. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. It's just my general lack of knowledge of state law for this, but, and she has to go through random drug testing. Why can't we at the high school level do any sort of substance testing associated with extracurricular, you know, sports? I mean, I'm pretty sure when I was in high school, we had to, I thought had to do testing. This was in Virginia.
Yeah.
I remember there were always threats of it. I don't know if anybody actually was tested.
Yeah.
Maybe it was just threats.
Yeah.
But is there, it's always a state law or?
I, I guess we could ask Fred. I mean, I'm not aware of any school that does it. Are you, Mateela?
And I know it's come up before, and I think a lot of the hesitation or the roadblocks are legally, not having the ability to do it.
I guarantee you 100%.
Right. I mean, we do breathalies before, like the prom, you know, we do breathalies all the students before they go to the prom, you know, just to make sure.
And might even be a cost factor, you know, in terms of paying for all of those tests.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry. But if you're really interested, I can chat and call Fred.
I am, because I, I mean, I'm telling you 100%. I have one child who graduated, I can't remember, three years ago, and another one who just graduated this past year. But it's definitely 100% there. It's there now.
And Fred will be at our next, at our next meeting, so maybe we could ask him then?
Yeah. We could take those as a follow-up. It's a good question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You, thank you. I, this is going to be interesting. Okay. Superintendent!
Thank you. Christine Haley wasn't able to be with us this evening, but she put together the, well, the department put together the financial report, and I did get some, a write-up from Christine going over some of her looks at the financial report and areas that she had she wanted to point out. So again, we're just getting started in the school year. Remember, generally what we do, though, is we encumber for the entire year in certain areas, like utilities, like anticipated costs and some of those other things. So sometimes the numbers may look like we're in the deficit, and it's only October, but that's because we're projecting out for the entire year. So the biggest issue currently impacting and financial concerns are the telephone accounts. You may remember, we put in a new system, and that's pretty much throughout the financial report when you look at, at our phones. It can be seen on page one of the detail, about halfway down the page for the superintendent's office, and on page four of the detail, about the top third of the page under utility services. Again, we have that new telephone provider, but we've not yet seen the savings, the financial impact that we were anticipating. Once we start to realize some of those savings, we'll make some adjustments to the encumbrances, and it will impact the final balance. Again, we project out for the year based on the bills we've seen thus far. On page two of the detail, there are a couple of small deficits within the technology area. Again, we're still sort of working with our new system, so not all of the money was encumbered in the correct line, but the overall amount for the account in that detail is fine. So the category as a whole is good. Has a significant surplus. On page four of the detail, on the top of the page, is the utility section. We already talked about the telephone accounts, and some of the other utility accounts are showing deficits. When we built the budget, again, we really took a cut everywhere we could because we were trying to save staff. You all may remember our last budget season, it was mildly painful. And Christine really cut all our utilities to the bone. So we're budgeting out. So we're budgeting out, and at this point, it looks like it's going to be tight, and there is very little wiggle room. As we start really getting more bills coming through the years, we'll have a better sense of what it looks like. Christine accounted for changes in supply costs, but other costs that were not negotiated have also risen. You know, you probably can all look at your own electric bill and understand where we're going with that. We'll continue to monitor the situation very closely. If it really looks like we're going to have a deficit, we'll have to look at our budget and probably make some cuts in other locations. At this point, it's not anything we're terribly concerned about, but it is something we will continue to monitor. The last section is on page four of the detail, on about the bottom third of the page under insurance services, under workman's compensation. Our policy rose very slightly, and the discount granted by the carrier for early payment, we always take advantage of those things to try to save monies on the overall cost. The, that discount has decreased over the past couple of years. They don't give us as much of a discount for paying early, and the athletic policy has increased over the past four years. We provide a policy, if you have a student athlete, you probably know this, that covers students pursuing athletic activities, and it allows families to recoup out-of-pocket costs. Some of you may have personal experience with it. Copays and deductibles for injuries that occurred during athletic pursuits, maybe a track accident, football injury, baseball, whatever it may be. For the past four years, the reimbursement to families have surpassed the premiums paid by the district. So that was pretty much Christine's take on the financial report. I think she, as always, was extremely thorough. Did you have any questions or concerns about it? No? Great. October 1 enrollment. So every year, the state requires us to submit enrollment by October 1. This year, we have the lovely color, which matches our school calendar. I think, what did we decide this was? Lisa, was it marigold? I don't remember.
That's what you had said.
I think it's marigold.
The article on packages is called solar yellow.
Oh, solar, Mark!
Oh!
Mark, it's an honor of Mark. I like that. Solar yellow. Okay, so on our solar yellow page, you can get a sense of our enrollment. I just wanted to go through the front part of the page first, if that's okay?
Just the front.
So current, just the front first. I'm sorry. Good point. Why do you not know what I'm talking about? The piece that has the grid on it? I'm so sorry. The backside, and again, I don't think I'll ever get past saying this, John Toffey always called the I chart. So we're going to go with the front part of the chart, please. In Halifax, at the middle school, we currently have 155 students. At the high school, we have 548 students. For Kingston, we have at the high school, excuse me, at the middle school, 314 students, and at the high school, we have 638 students. And in Plimpton, we have at the middle school, 72 students, and on the high school level, 138 students. Our total student population is 3,576. I also just want to point out, we have tuitioned students, and those are students who are going to CTE from other districts, and we currently have 38 students that are tuitioned in from other districts into our Chapter 74 programs. As you'll notice, the numbers are going down slightly at this point in time. We are having some bumps, some curves, and it is extremely difficult to predict. If you look across almost any of the elementary grade levels, and then you continue right across, you can see the difference in class sizes. Halifax has been running classes that were in the 90s, and the grade 12 class was over 100. Halifax has not had a class size over 100. This is the last one over 100 in the last 13 years.
This is the blip.
That's the blip.
At the elementary level, we had to have a teacher follow this class.
Exactly. Yeah, it was the blip. Now, Halifax was going down. You'll notice grade six is only 77 students, and grade eight is only 69 students. But right now, if you look at kindergarten and first grade, they're back up into the 90s. So I'm having difficulty predicting class sizes, okay? Because we're having these sort of, it's sort of like a wave throughout the buildings. Kingston is very much in the waves. We had a presentation Tuesday night. You know, they have class, their grade 12 class is 171. There is no class even close to that on the elementary level at this point in time. Their grade six is 134. Their largest class, which is again, the blip for Kingston, is grade two at 166. So, you know, it is difficult, and just so you understand, as we're sort of predicting this and we're looking, you know, working with the different towns, it is difficult in terms of the assessments are sort of ups and downs. And again, this is something that truly impacts the town's payment for the children in Silver Lake, but it is something that can be very difficult to predict, but definitely has a huge impact on the town. And we appreciate their support and sense of humor about that. Sorry. So Plimpton, again, has the same thing happening. Plimpton, Plimpton's largest class, I think, is 36, which is the current grade 10 group. Oh, no, I'm sorry, grade eight has a 40. Grade eight has 40. And they have a low in grade three of 16. So there's really quite a range, again, between all of the towns in terms of it. So just to let you know, this is something that we work on, we track. I actually found when, after John left, and I was able to put together all of our enrollments from back to like 1960. They're kind of fun to look at, but it's really kind of intriguing to sort of watch how the enrollment has been, has been changing. Anybody have any questions on the first part?
I have a couple.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to mention that. SC is school choice. I did that on Tuesday night, I'm so sorry.
That's why it's only Plimpton.
It's only Plimpton because Plimpton, at this point, the class sizes are small.
Yeah.
And although it is mixed for Plimpton to accept school choice students, I do think that it is helpful for, when the classes are particularly low, to build out the classes a little bit in terms of, for the students that are present.
And they do something different at the middle school and high school level?
At the middle school and the high school level, we have never accepted school choice. And that's something that we vote on as a district. We have school choice in terms of Chapter 74. Students can tuition in, it's not really school choice. We accept students from other districts, but only Plimpton accepts school choice, and they only have accepted it for certain grades. Once you accept a child, though, they stay in that district through grade six. So normally what happens, and I think has been successful in Plimpton, is we accept them in kindergarten. And in that way, they sort of become a part of the community, and they sort of stay through. Like, the five students that are in grade three joined us in kindergarten.
Okay.
And they've just sort of stayed with the class right through.
Yeah. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
And I apologize if anybody else has a question, certainly. Off the top of your head, do you know how the tuitioned in numbers have gone, like historically? 38, is that a, is that a high, is that a low?
I think it's fairly consistent.
Yeah.
I believe it's pretty consistent. I think it usually hovers 35 to just over 40.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think it's been much over 40 by memory. I could check that, but I think that's pretty close.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about the tuitioning? So are those, those are all special education students?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have any tuitioned in, special education students?
No. Good memory, though. We had two students from East Broad Road that were in our life skills program. That, we did have that tied.
We don't have any at the elementary level? I mean, I know.
No, just Halifax and Plimpton tuition into Kingston. We usually house them in Kingston because it's their biggest district and they have the space, but we have not taken them out of district. Our programs are so full, we actually don't have a lot of spaces, and we are probably going to need to break out the programs we already have into two separate classes because they're, they're sort of bulging at the seams. Is everybody okay with the front side? Okay, now if we flip to the I chart side. So this is basically our October 1 enrollments, and it's broken out to the number of students who are within the Union and Silver Lake, and it goes back through 2012 through 17. The top portion is interesting, but it's really just a summary of the front part. The part that I would like to point out is the middle section, and that's the Silver Lake assessment percentages, because this is really what's going to impact the towns. We have tonight with us only Kingston, and so I'm just going to go through them the way they're printed, though. In Halifax, last year, they were 32.1% of the district. Halifax this year is 32% of the district. That means they'll have to pay a slightly smaller percentage of their assessment. Kingston got some really good news in terms of their percentage of their assessment for this year. They were 56.5% of Silver Lake last year. This year, they've dropped to 55.7%. Now, somebody got good news, you can probably break the code that another town got bad news, right? Because it has to total 100%. So unfortunately, Plimpton is going to be very sad. I will not drive through Plimpton for a while, I'm thinking. 2018, they were 11.4%. This year, they're up to 12.3%. That is, that's, that is going to be a pretty big jump for Plimpton percentage-wise. Again, the numbers add up to 100%. But for Kingston, again, they will have a smaller percentage of the student population that they have to support. For the Union, again, remember the bubble where, you know, the elementary and the secondary aren't necessarily the same percentages? So if you go down to the shared costs, and again, this is our K through six percentages. So Halifax was 32.5. They went up to 32.7. Kingston stayed exactly the same, which is kind of interesting. And Plimpton went from 11.5 to 11.3. So those are their percentages that they have to pay of our shared cost bills. Okay? So this is information that's required by the state. It's the October 1 enrollments. The state is actually playing around with changing their due dates on this. So I'll be curious to see if that happens. I have no idea how we're going to figure out what that will mean for assessment. So they're talking about moving it to March. Is that right, Jason? That's the last thing I remember.
Moving to April 15.
April 15. So I, I'll be curious to see how that may play out. I know.
It's on.
It does to me, too. But most of the things that come up with do, so. But anyway, these are our assessment numbers. I'm going to.
I can speak to the, the April 15 date whenever you want.
Do I include?
Oh, certainly.
If there's a question on why we're pushing for the change in the enrollment date to be from October 1 to the 15th of April, it has to do with when we decide who's accountable for the state testing, partially. So that would be a more accurate timeframe for when a kid would be in the school on April 15. They'd most likely also be taking the F-2.0 within the school district. So those scores would be reported to the proper school. It's also in response to how many kids go to a charter school, and then they drop out and come back to their sending school. We would receive the monies, let's say, if a child came back after Christmas, because we would be the school of record on April 15 instead of October 1. And lastly, there's usually movement in enrollments, especially in schools that have more transient populations, and you really don't hit your highest enrollment rate until about February, March. So that's another reason why we picked that date instead of October 1.
Those are all good reasons.
Yeah.
Jason, do you know if that means that they'll change the reporting schedule? Because right now, we report October 1 and March 1 for enrollments.
So this is one of those things that's still very much on the drawing board and up in the air. And I saw how Fred shied away from general legislation, because now they're in a two-year legislative cycle. They don't vote on things the first year it even comes to the table anymore, so don't hold anything except for that's a date they're looking at.
Got it.
Interesting. Thank you for that additional information.
So this will be in, we're going to get, do a binder again like last year as we build the budget. I think most people seem to enjoy it. Our teachers are already collecting some of the art. Lisa and I were oohing and aahing over it today. It is absolutely gorgeous. I'm really excited to include, oh, very nice modeling. Mark, do that again. That was a nice banner. It was lovely. Yep, that was very good. So we're, we're looking forward to putting that together. We're going to use a slightly smaller binder this year. I do think the binder concept was a little bit easier to maintain than the soft, the flat, soft one. But we will go smaller. Again, it was the first year, I apologize, it was a learning curve, but it was a little bigger than we needed, which was great, that we didn't need more.
I'm going to say something as just one committee member. You need not apologize for that binder timeline, artwork, information you gave us. That was a wonderful, wonderful improvement in the whole process. That, that was a very dynamic idea. You need not apologize for any part of that.
Thank you. So this will be included in your notebook that we'll be giving out, January, December, soon, sometime soon. And let's see, budget timeline. So again, as part of that, I find it hard to believe that we're just in October, and I'm already unfortunately having to start thinking budgets. So in your packet is the planning schedule, and it's the same basic concept that we've done before, because I actually think it's worked, and it's been pretty helpful. So we are right now just beginning as administrators to talk about the FY19 budget. And we will have the administrators submit their budget by Thanksgiving. That's sort of our timeline. That gives Christine and myself time to review their meetings, you know, their ideas, look at their requests, their proposals, make sure we understand why they're requesting it, see if it makes sense, see if it's a possibility. And then we start the actual, putting it into an actual budget. We hold the meetings with the administrators. I also need to include Jill. Jill will be a very important part of that. One of the things I'm really working on is trying to make sure that the curriculum instruction pieces are really tied into the budget, so it makes sense, so you understand why we need those textbooks. So trying to make that connection a little bit clearer. Remember, we had quite a lengthy discussion about textbooks last year. So I'm working, we've got some ideas that I think will make that hopefully a little bit more helpful for you. We're also going to do sort of a refresher course on our accounting system, because the principals haven't had to build a budget in it since last year. It's a new accounting system to us. So we're working on getting that scheduled before Thanksgiving, so everybody knows and is able to do that properly. So this evening, I wondered if the school committee would like to share with me any ideas that you have that you'd like us to keep on the forefront as we're building the budget and to be included. Is it right if I just take people? Jason?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So this, I'm slightly ignorant, I apologize. Do we have within the high school and/or the middle school at this point, what a lot of the school districts are calling a transition room, a Zen room? There's actually a program called the Break Program that a couple of school districts in the area have. Do we have any model like that at this point?
We do not.
We do not.
Okay, so just so I can speak to the matter for a moment, manager, if you understand this. You know, we've been talking about social emotional learning and social emotional issues that's been, are seeming to have increased in, you know, presentations of in modern students. And we also know mental health issues are on the rise as well. Earlier today, we had, the teachers mentioned the Gay Straight Alliance. We know that students who identify as LGBTQ often have much, much higher incidences of mental health issues as well. A transition room, to use that word, is a place for somebody who's not necessarily, or could be, a special ed student, but somebody who's having some of these mental health, social, emotional difficulties to have a supportive environment where they can have someone and staff advocate for them, so when they're going through a difficult time as it is, they don't have to manage five or six different teachers to negotiate, what can I get done with the way I am right now? We have lots of students going on hospitalizations and coming back and having to transition back into a regular day program. I just know that we have a system here that treats each individual student as an individual. And I can't begin to tell you, I don't even have students yet at either one of these schools, the middle school or the high school. My kids are still elementary age. The compliments I get from parents all the time about how caring this place is, and how all the way to the principals take care of their children every single day, I can't speak enough of that. But this is something I'd like us to look at as a district moving forward, is putting in place, maybe just doing some research for the next year or so to see the different programs that are out there. But I would like to see it considered in the budget in some way as well. Snapting wise, space wise, please. Thank you.
I would add to that. One of my children had some difficulties in seventh grade, so in the, here in the middle school, and the guidance department, Mr. Cuccinato. And the guidance department, Mr. Cuccinato, was absolutely amazing and had a very open-door policy, as well as the nurse, and worked -- and was kind of acting as that person, the point person with some of the teachers when he needed assistance. So it's there. I mean, not necessarily a transition room, but it was a place for him to go when he wasn't feeling comfortable. So it was both the nurse, Mr. Cuccinato, they're fabulous. So, Mr. De Peel, you should know, and I'm sure you already know that, you know, how great they are.
I appreciate that.
Super supportive of the students.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else within the budget you'd like to make sure we focus on or remember?
I'd just like to reiterate that we do need to have that study done, what to do with our admin building space, and keep that on your forecast. Otherwise, facility-wise, I think we're in pretty good shape with our study that we're following and continuing to improve on our maintenance as our schools get older. I don't see anything looming over the horizon that would be a major item, other than what's already identified on the calendar.
Mark, I know that one of the big things that was proposed last year, and I know you were a big proponent of it, was the new CTE program. That's something that we have kind of --
Obviously, thank you for bringing that up. I'd love to support.
I mean, I figured you would mention it if you wanted to move forward, but I just remember a lot of passionate discussions about that last year, and, you know, is that something we want to talk about again?
Was that health sciences?
Yes, the Health Science Initiative. I think that still would be a program that would be well-received and prepare our youth for the job market better than the general population. And obviously, that our CTE goals are to line up with employment opportunities that are readily available for good income.
Absolutely. And another program that, you know, I've only had some small, very small conversations with Mr. Glass was computer science, because it wouldn't have some of the requirements that the health program would in terms of limitations for supervision of staff. We wouldn't need some of the space. We would need maybe a little bit more technology, again, in terms of the capacity. But I think it certainly is a field that there would be no lack of jobs for students also. So that's another program that seems to be a very popular program and may not have some of the limitations and required requirements for an extra teacher and requirements for limitations on class size for safety reasons.
And we are losing students. I mean, I know of several who want to go or are currently going to Central Botec.
Exactly. Yeah. It is one that, when I sign and they go for out of district, it is one of the programs that they definitely leave our district for. So it's another one that's, you know, sort of would certainly be of interest if we could manage. Sure.
The other thing I was going to add is, you know, trying not to cut any AP classes. I know you're probably asking what we want to add potentially, but I would say just
At least maintain what we have.
At least maintain, yeah, the offerings that we have. I mean, unless there's something, which I was just looking briefly through the class size report, but, you know, there was obviously something that had no interest, then, you know, reconsider it. But for the most part, you know, one of the great things about Silver Lake, obviously, is the number of AP offerings and the number of students who take care of -- who take advantage of those as well.
This is such a difficult conversation, because there's all sorts of things we want to add.
Absolutely.
And the CTE program, you know, especially with some of the stuff we proposed last year and what you're proposing this year, just unfortunately adds.
Absolutely.
So I think it's going to be very difficult to do. But both those points, I would like to see if we -- what we could do. More interest almost to make sure that we don't lose more than we make.
I absolutely agree. I mean, you know, I'm well aware of the town's fiscal constraints.
My big thing is to maintain what we have.
I agree. Thank you.
But I think, too, if we're looking at vocational programs as well, there's also tuition dealing with students. So, I mean, Central Botec does FCIT, and I have no idea what their numbers are. Mark would obviously know those numbers. Not that we're trying to steal people from Mark, but, you know.
Yeah, we are.
Right. But I mean, certainly, there are students in neighboring towns that would most likely send their students here, too. So, you know, it might -- there might be some initial cost, but we might recoup a lot of that, too.
Like one of the things, too, like even the solo program going forward, they said they had to have direct educational purposes for it. I was wondering if some of the money could be signed, maybe around some sort of solo engineering class in CTE or something like that, too.
There was a substantial employment change. Solo industries employ more women, minorities, and all levels of education right now.
With the largest employers of energy in the country right now.
Yeah, but is it sales or is it engineering?
Both.
So I have an input from a two thousand and fifteen graduate majoring in business at Stonehill College indicating that business exposure here at Silver Lake was very minimal. And I know that the Guidance Council, Guidance Department at Silver Lake is looking for ways to bring at no cost to the school in business input in, and we're working through the business associations. But anything we can do to bring back at least, of course, elective in business for those interested in pursuing business as a career, I think would be a great elective at some point. We have the teacher resource. There's that article, and I'll pass down it, on rebooting Boo College Ops coding. I don't know, you guys want to read that? We can take that.
Yeah, thank you. Exactly.
Just since Allied Health got brought up, I was going to save this for the CTE subcommittee meeting next week. I do have a potential partnership for us that would substantially cut the cost for Silver Lake, would provide qualified nurses and even placements potential for our students. I've been talking with PACC about some sort of synergistic partnership that we would obviously have to go through some conversations and negotiations about. But one of their strategical initiatives that they established last year is they would like to have more exposure for their kids to some CTE programs. But they also have a tremendous nurse-to-student ratio profile there, just because of the demographics of the students served by PACC. So there might be something for us to try and work out and look at there.
That's interesting. That's very interesting.
We're still pursuing the greenhouse initiative with a grant, right?
Elliot's still working at that.
Glass house. I love that.
Anything else? Anyone? I have just sort of a question. It might be premature at this point. The twelfth grade students graduating this year, the first year we issued Chromebooks. What is the give-back, recycle? Do we have any idea what's going to happen with those Chromebooks yet?
So we've just started those conversations. It might be premature, so. Well, actually, no, we're definitely hot on that one.
Okay.
Your timing's good.
Yeah. So we met with our tech team, actually, last week to talk about what are our next steps with this graduating class. And we have a couple of options out there, and we are hoping to survey the students and the parents, actually, to see if the best route is to do a buyback program, for them to be able to purchase the devices. Do we take them back, restore them, and share them with our middle school and high school teachers? Do we take them and the ones that are used, have them as extras throughout the district? So we have a couple of different options right now. So our first goal is to create that survey, to see if there's even an interest from families to purchase these devices. And then we need to really assess how many of the ones that we initially purchased four years ago are still in good working condition. So.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, they're in good working condition for at least another six months.
Yes. We'll get them to June. I'm not sure what their life is beyond that, though. They've taken a good beating. And remember, year one, that these devices are different than the ones we purchased the last couple of years. So the models have improved, and they have a different screen, so.
Yeah. Good. All right. Interesting. Nothing under old business? Nothing under new business? Okay. What's those reports? So do you?
I was going to let Michaela go first, because I know she has a presentation up on the screen that she wanted to show.
Sure.
Do you want me to log in? Do I? I think you're still on. I think I can exit out. And it's at the end of my part. I saved you at the bottom. Thank you. Two little tabs down there. Perfect. Thank you. So the first thing I have to share with everyone this evening is our October one class report. There are a couple of things that I just wanted to point out. First is just a reminder to the committee that the class sizes is an average size. So if you see that there are multiple sections, it doesn't mean that that's how many are in each. You can do the math and figure out that some may be bigger, some may be smaller. If you're looking at the report, the courses that have an I with them are inclusion classes. The five thousand numbers are special education classes. And I wanted to point out that this year, we were able to provide and run thirteen independent studies. And I just want to acknowledge our teachers, who actually volunteered to take their time to take on these added classes beyond their contractual obligations. And we also have three electives that are open to our student body in our CTE program. We have one in automotive, one in carpentry, and one in early education and childcare. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So last year, this same list comes up, and it really has to do with the naming of your classes. And some of the classes start with the word English, because it's English. Another one starts with honors. Is there any way to standardize, have you type the course first and then the level second?
And then the level after?
Have you designed your -- I mean, it's a question of naming. I just don't know why we have to highlight the word AP or the word honors instead of -- there's just no standard that goes back and forth.
Right. It's inconsistent in each department.
Right. So have your courses studies, when you guys print it up, I mentioned it to your predecessor, but we're still doing the same thing. I just don't know if there's a possibility of standardizing that description.
I think there is. I will work with Mr. Murphy on that. I'm sure that's an easy -- I'm assuming it's an easy fix, but I will talk to him about that. Absolutely.
Congratulations on the independent studies. Those are key to making us some very independent students when they go off to college with them. Another definition of how well the school sticks one-on-one to try to create the program necessary to match the child.
Thank you. We had our parent-teacher conferences last week. We had two hundred and forty-four parents make appointments for two hundred and ninety-four of our students. One thing that we added this year, our adjustment counselor, Dawn Nickerson, and our school nurse, Kristen, they put together a healthy minds, healthy -- a healthy body, healthy minds table in our event entrance, again, to address some of the growing social and emotional learning needs that our students have. And they reached out to different organizations, and they were provided with free resources and some free swag to give to our parents who were there that evening. And they conducted a survey of the parents to try to solicit some more feedback on the types of topics they would like to learn more about in terms of their students' wellness experience. So they will have that same table at our March parent conferences, and that's one that will also be available to address any questions related to esper. Parents who are not able to attend conferences are always encouraged to reach out to our teachers, be email or telephone. And if they would like to set up a conference, we can always coordinate through our Guidance Department. As part of our Laker Lecture Series, I have a handout here for you for Screenagers. It's our next show that we're bringing to the big screen, if you will. So this is a documentary that highlights teens and young children growing up in a digital age. And Joy actually was the first one to bring this to our attention. She knew, I think, of another superintendent in a nearby school who had a screen for their community. Catherine Pratt, the assistant principal, and I had an opportunity to go to Situit High School last June to view the documentary. And we all sort of, in talking with one another, decided this is something that we wanted to have for our community as well. So our PTO is generously paying for the screening. It is open to the community and to the public. It's appropriate for parents and for students. In fact, when we were at the one in Situit, there were six and seven and eight-year-old students there who actually participated in the follow-up questions with us. And it was pretty neat to kind of see different age groups coming together for this. So I had originally intended to share a clip of the preview with you, but it is -- the website is there for you if you'd like to watch it on your own time, I think, in the interest of time. I'll skip that part. We are sending out a message to the district tomorrow. So every parent across the district will receive a flyer and information to get tickets. They are free. If they don't have the time to go online, or they don't have access to get them, they can come in. It doesn't matter. It's -- we live public. And then we'll do a reminder email next week as well, just to kind of solicit some support for this. So I did have -- we did print out some tickets in advance, so if you want to grab some, or if you know someone that might be interested, feel free to snag some before you leave tonight. Next up, just wanted to share some upcoming events that we have between now and our next school committee meeting. As you know, our teachers left earlier today to go back over to Silver Lake Idol. My phone was blowing up with Twitter about who our winner was. Tomorrow is our fourth annual staff kickball tournament. This is an event that we host every year to raise money for breast cancer awareness. And Jill and Joy. I'll read my first. We're all on the same team, thank goodness.
I recommend a lot of stretching.
Yeah. It's tough out there. It's more socializing than actual kickball, but it's a great event.
It's really embarrassing when you miss it that.
Sorry. You know, we -- some of us get striked out a little bit earlier than others, but that's okay. It's all good fun. It's all to raise awareness. And this event each year kicks off our Breast Cancer Awareness Week that takes place next week at the high school. And in case you haven't driven by Lake Street yet, you'll see the field is all decked out with pink ribbons. Just about every athletic team, every club, every student organization at our school gets involved in some way, shape, or form, whether it's hosting a fundraiser throughout the week, sponsoring something. There's going to be a PSA each day, and it culminates in our Pink Out Day on Friday, where everybody dresses up in pink. Last year, we raised six thousand dollars, and we donated it to the Dana Farber Breast Cancer Center at South Shore Hospital, which goes directly to our local communities. So we're hoping to break that record this year. Like I said, tomorrow's event kicks it off literally. We're extending it into the week after for the pie-in-the-face contest, which I signed up for, and we can compete against each other. Yeah, I did. But students can compete, and they can put positive points and negative points into all the staff members who signed up. So if I feel that I'm getting too many positive points, I can dump in some negative points. So I've got my twenties ready to go. In addition to that, myself, Jamie Vatonas, our ELA coordinator, and Dan Korea, one of our math teachers, will be attending a NEAS seminar next week to kick off our prepping time for our NEAS visit, which, you know, seems far away. It's October seventh, 2020, but believe it or not, this is a process that starts now, and we'll be spending a lot of time on over the next three years. I mentioned Screenagers.
I'm sorry, I've been interrupting for just a minute. Just so you know, that will also be a budget implication. We will have to start setting some money aside, working towards NEAS, believe it or not. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Will that be the new revised NEAS?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So our conference next week is a seminar to kind of learn what the new process looks like. We'll have that to share with everybody. No, no, that's fine. This year, student council officers loved their -- what do they call the middle school that you're doing next week? The middle school fright night?
Oh, yeah. Haunted halls.
Haunted halls. So much that they want to bring it to the high schools. So we're doing our own twisted version of a fright night the week after the middle school's event. And then on November first, we have our NHS induction. And then one last event that I'd like to highlight that we're starting this year is our Veterans Appreciation Day at Silver Lake. Our Social Studies Department Chair, Melissa Fontaine, is working with her department to invite local veterans from our three communities into Silver Lake to speak with our social studies classes. And then we like to host an appreciation luncheon in our Culinary Arts Cafe to thank luncheon in our Culinary Arts Cafe to thank them for their service and time for our country. And then lastly, if I can move over to the screen real quick, our Best Buddies Program created a Safe Walking Tips PSA that they submitted to Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and they actually won honorable mention. Unfortunately, there was such a quick turnaround time from when it was submitted to when they announced the winners. But they were invited to the Park Plaza to be a part of an honoring celebration for them, but they were unable to go because of the short time that it took to get that information back to them. So they are holsteining their own celebration next week that we've been invited to. But I wanted to share the PSA to show you how hard our gold students work together on this. And you'll see there's a couple of cameos in it as well.
And I apologize, I fibbed to you that we weren't using the screen again.
Wear the right shoes, wear bright clothes, and carry a flashlight, especially when you're walking at night. In stormy conditions, watch out for fallen branches, downed powerlines, and other debris. Be careful not to walk in deep floodwaters. Stay alert, keep your headphones on. Is the unit library able to hold some of the walking tools? Box with friends.
So Robbie, the young man with the dark hair, is actually one of the students who helped edit everything and put it all together. So it was a great experience for them, and the fact that they won the prize didn't hurt.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for the evening.
And I believe our librarian, Linda Redding, may have helped with that?
Yeah, so it was Alex Frazier and Gannon Rubin, who are working with our gold students this year, and Linda Redding, who helped with the technical support.
Wonderful. Thank you. Great effort.
Absolutely.
Jim, you're wrapping up the evening for us.
I am. I'll keep it brief.
You can just sleep over.
Maybe I'll go long. I won't do that to you. So the first is the, two people for our donation to our NASA trip, which we had talked about last time. So I want to thank Jonathan Guidaboni, who works for SpaceX. He reached out, made a donation for some of our students to help us with that trip. He's also reached out to say that he will connect with us, to talk about some of his experiences around launches. So it's really a great way, not only connect to SpaceX and things that they're doing, but also to have a past Silver Lake grad come and talk to us about what he's currently doing and what they're going to kind of go down and see. So that's very exciting. And Mark...
2,008 grads.
What's that?
2,008 grads.
2,008 grads. So, and Mark also made a donation. So first, I would like to ask, if you have a vote on accepting the donations.
Motion? Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Yes.
That's fantastic.
So again, I want to thank our donators. So we are excited. So we started that process for the NASA trip, so that's kind of an exciting thing. But I'll talk more about that another time, not when it's like 10:30 at night. So back to school night, we had a great turnout for back to school night. It was really exciting to see the classrooms, the engaging use of technology in the classrooms, the clarity that was given to the curriculum and activities the students would be involved with. And I was impressed to see our teachers engaging our parents, to give our parents a sense of their teaching style in the classroom and what their children are kind of involved in. So I want to thank all our parents for coming and being a part of that night for us. And I want to thank our teachers for doing a wonderful job in embracing our community. So it was really a nice event. We also have coming up in November is SOS. And that is, when we, it's kind of a reach out, it's an anti, it's an informational depression, and it helps identify supports that we can put in place to help students. So it not only identifies signs and things that students can see, that they can self-identify, they can identify with friends, and then it gives them avenues and access to guidance, adjustment counselors, school site, in the building, nurse, that they can also identify who they can go out and reach out to. Obviously, a big problem with depression and things, our kids internalize that, don't know who to communicate that to. And then it becomes, and then it worsens and deepens that depression. And a big thing is to help self-identify and give them an avenue to go and reach out and have a positive place to go with how they're feeling and communicate that. And that's one of the things we do with our eighth graders. We do that coming up in November. So I just wanted to kind of make mention of that. Our counselors do a great job with that, and we appreciate their effort. We had welcome back dance. That was our first dance of the year. So we had over 200 students come in. That was a great event. PTO comes, supports us, helps us with that event. They did a limbo contest. Kids were going underneath the limbo stick. It was really a lot of fun. So that was a great event. The event we have coming up next Friday, which Michaela had alluded to, is our haunted halls and Halloween dance, when kids come in costume. And they come in 500 strong. So we have 500 students that come to an event, waiting to go through the haunted house, and then come down and be with their friends at the dance. It's really an exciting event. They're all excited to get in, and they're all really excited to be at the dance, and they see each other in costume. So it's really so much fun. And it's something that the kids don't leave them either, because we had, last year, we had over 70 high school students come back and be a part of that event with us. So it's something that really doesn't leave them. And our intention is to have about 70 high school students come back. We already have 56 that signed up so far to come back and help us out against this year. We really appreciate our high school students still to be a part of that with us. So it's really a give back, and it's a great event for our kids to come. So if anyone has an opportunity, the invitation is always there. Guys, come see, be a part of it. I think, Jason, you were there last year, correct?
I loved it. I had a gang of guys from Halifax come over and guide me through the haunted hallways. And by the end, we were all very close friends. It was just amazing to see so many kids. And again, it's another testament to the schools, how many kids come back on Friday night to spend time with each other, how many teachers were there to be there with the kids and to support the school. And again, those high school students up there in the hallways, pretty frightening scene. I highly, highly suggest you come by if you have a chance.
I agree. It's really a great community event where everyone really does come together. And it's a great opportunity for our teachers to get with our old high school students. High school students email some of our teachers, and it really is a nice event. So if you have an opportunity, it'd be great to have you come. It's one of the things that, the first year we had done it, Joe Ed Shaves had come and talked to me and said, I'm coming to that event. I want to come see what's going on there. And I'll say for Joe, we all miss, but he came every year. Every year he was here for that event. And so, but it is a special thing that the kids really take with them, obviously, because they come back. And so we're excited, and I thank the high school for that as well. Flag football. So we had our flag football tournament recently. We had over 100 students sign up to be at our flag football tournament, over 24 teams competing out on the football field. Yes, I laced up again this year. However, my performance was a little subpar this year. I was on the goal line, and I threw a pick, and we lost the game. So this year, I didn't bring it home this year. But I have one more chance, because the teams that won the event, they come back and they compete with us the day before Thanksgiving break. And it's a 10-man team versus 10, we actually have 20 faculty that kind of rotate in. And it's a lot of fun. So the teams that win, so I have one more chance to get out there and not throw a pick on the goal line and lose the game. So we'll see what happens. So that's the flag football. It was really a lot of fun. So that's it for me.
Make sure to tape up your ankles.
Yeah, I needed to tape up the arm.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
All righty. Reminders, next school committee meeting, November 9. And it's here again? Middle school again?
Yes, it is. Back here.
All right. Very good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Does anyone want to stand?
I'm standing.
Thanks, folks.